Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. We've got a few things that are not of business, so if we start a little bit early, that's okay. I'm gonna call Roe. Caitlin?
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
Aquormus present, your honor.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for a prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Robinson.
Bow our heads, please. Father, we thank you this day for another opportunity to carry on the business for the city of North Little Rock and for the residents as well. We ask that you be with us throughout this meeting. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of presentations tonight. We do this in November every year and have for, I don't know how many years, 20 maybe. So, I'm gonna proclaim November as Adoption Awareness Month. If y'all recall, over the years, Bill Marling is always here to talk about his agency, Families Are Special, and he talks about it and successes that they've had. And they have adopted 750 children of the Families Are Special Incorporated nonprofit that's located right here in North Little Rock. And then this past year, they've collected more than 300 suitcases, 250 used computers that they use to help these adopted and foster children. So, I urge all of our citizens to celebrate the month of November as Adoption Awareness Month and be supporting, helping those public and private agencies which enable children needing and waiting for a permanent family through adoption. So, in witness here of, I hereunto set my hand and cause the city of North Little Rock to be affixed, making this Adoption Awareness Month. Bill, I was a little under the weather tonight, was not able to be here, but I promised him that we would go ahead and make this a special month for him and all the adoption agencies across the state. So, I've got one more, but I am going to, no, I'm gonna do it right now. They, we have a very unique situation. And let me come down to the podium. We had a very unique situation recently at the workplace. You know, we spend a tremendous amount of time and money training all of our employees, from police and fire to electric to street department. And last month, we had an employee that got choked at work. And a lot of times, you know, we wanna panic a little bit. And our general manager at the North Little Rock Electric Company is very well-trained in safety issues and life-saving issues, and thanked the Lord that he was close enough that he could get there and used all the techniques that he was taught over the years to literally save this lady's life. And so, we didn't want it to go, Scott, if you'll come up, we didn't want it to go unnoticed how proud we are of our general manager, number one, knowing all the safety protocol and the emergency protocol. But Scott, you did, you saved one of our employees' life, and you're a pretty special guy, and we appreciate it. So, I'm gonna present you tonight with a certificate of appreciation in your successful life-saving issues. So, thank you, and I know Lana thanks you also. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Scott? Communications. Anybody wanna pull one? I'm showing three.
Number two.
Pull number two. All right, how about a motion to accept one and three? Do I have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Would you like it buried by title or in its entirety?
Its entirety, please.
This is a letter from Scott Springall, general manager of the electric department, to Mayor Smith and members of the city council dated October 26, 2018. The subject is Discontinuance of Bill Payment Collection. The purpose of this letter is to inform you that effective December 31, 2018, the North Little Rock Electric Department intends to discontinue processing customer payments for Central Arkansas Water and CenterPoint Energy. N-R-E-D recently assumed control over utility customer service operations of the city of North Little Rock. We intend to migrate customer service activities toward automated interaction and reduce the need for face-to-face interaction. We anticipate that increases in automated transactions will improve efficiency, reduce costs, and ensure equitable treatment for all customers. Unfortunately, our customer service plan does not support third-party billing processes. Thus, it is being discontinued. Signage, takeaway cards, and mailouts are being prepared to notify customers of the transition. Please contact me with any thoughts or ideas about how this transaction can be made easier for our customers.
Comments?
Could we, I don't know if Jill Ponder or somebody from the electric department, I've had some emails today concerning this, people with concerns, and just kinda explain why we're having to do this.
Okay. Mayor Smith and council, we had recently tried to modernize customer service a little bit, and one of the things we did is we did a study of how we were taking payments. In our last study, we found that the payments we're processing at city services, 52, almost 53 percent, are from Central Arkansas Water and CenterPoint. Those transactions, we do get reimbursed for, but they're between 32 cents and 50 cents. It costs us 92 cents to process those payments. We are trying to look at the economic feasibility of continuing to process those payments, and it's not in our business model. From time to time, we've also had software issues with Checkfree, who is the software company that helps us process those payments. When that goes down, North Little Rock Electric or the city of North Little Rock has the black eye. We look like we can't process payments or that we are causing long lines for no reason. So, those are second reason that we are moving away from them. And then our third reason is, is that we all know budgets get tighter, and we're trying to work more efficiently, and this was one of the ways that we were trying to be more efficient with how we process payments.
The days of walking in the door and bringing cash and paying your utility bills are just about over. And, you know, just think, you know, energy or even Central Arkansas Water and CenterPoint, you know, you work up your system on how you pay. It's through Walmart or Kroger or whoever does that.
Correct. They both offer those options. Center Point, or Central Arkansas Water, actually two blocks or three blocks over the river, actually still takes payments at their location, but they also take them at Kroger and Walmart. We just don't find it economically feasible to continue to process them.
Exactly. Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering how many people, you know, will this affect?
We believe it'll affect between 7,000 to 8,000 customers per month. We do plan to try to make sure they're notified. We'll have signage in the lobby as well as in the drive-thru area. They'll receive a takeaway card, and for those customers who do mail in their payment, we'll return a mailing, letting them know that we are no longer processing at that location and where they can process that payment.
Ms. Ross?
Just to be clear, we still will take North Little Rock Electric.
Yes, this is nothing to, we are always, yes, for what, this is, we are taking North Little Rock Electric payments. This is just Central Arkansas Water and CenterPoint.
Which is no longer providing that service to those two utility companies that are costing us.
We will no longer be a third-party payment processor.
That's costing us money to have the service for them. And I know one of the things that I ask you about too, as far as having someone in the lobby in city services when you go to have your electric services, you know, when you start up your electric, if they will still have someone there from C-A-W?
C-A-W will no longer be present in our lobby. They are only a couple of blocks over the bridge, and they still have full lobby access.
Okay. I know that was very convenient, but I also understand.
Well, and it can be very convenient, yes, but they do offer, you know, telephone and online registration, so it still can be very convenient.
Thank you.
Just one more time, what are the North Little Rock locations that people will be able to continue paying those bills?
They can pay Central Arkansas Water and CenterPoint at Kroger locations.
Okay.
So, they can still do that. Other than that, CenterPoint doesn't accept any payments anywhere other than third-party processors. They don't have a lobby you can walk into anymore.
And you can always do your bank drafts, and we're eventually going to the prepay for North Little Rock Electric?
We are trying to get there, yes, to prepay. You know, a lot of the utilities offer, you know, you can process your payment through them. We encourage you to use your bank. Usually, there's no fee there, so I would use your bank to process those payments.
Right. And for the ones that do not have a banking account, though, they, checking account at their banks, they can still go into Krogers.
They can still do that, yes.
Kroger or Walmart.
And even if they wanted to process it online, they could use a prepaid debit card if they wanted to, so they don't have to have a bank account to be able to process a payment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion.
Libbed, accepted, and filed.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go into public comment, people who've signed up to talk about particular legislation. First one, Ms. Henderson, do you wanna speak now or do you wanna wait until we call the legislation? Or are you Juanita? Well, come on, girl.
How you doing this evening?
We're doing good, thank you.
Good. Aldermen's. I am Juanita Henderson and the president of Military Heights Organization. I have given to you this evening a little booklet, and on that booklet or in that booklet, it tells something about our community. If you feel a little bit of a history, some of the things that we're doing. And I've also inserted some information about the zoning that we're involved in. Military Heights Outreach Association is a governing body of the Military Heights community. Military Heights is a small, family-oriented community that was established in 1898, which means that we're really old for here in North Little Rock, and was rehabilitated by the North Little Rock Urban Renewal Project of 1964. The Urban Renewal Project drew layouts and designed zones for the area. Military Heights was Zone C1, which meant that it's quiet, professional, commercial offices and R-4 residential. And I found that information from the North Little Rock Planning Commission. C1, the quiet business district, and it is far mainly professional offices, which serves the resident in that area. It is characterized as low traffic volume. That district or this district is a small district, it's small in size, and it is the buffer between the business and the residential area. Housing Authority made a request to the North Little Rock Commission. We feel that the Housing Authority has not been honest with the Military Heights community. They sought a zone change without following the proper procedures for the change. We learned of their plans when we noticed a sign in the yard of the Willa House requesting a zone change. However, it is stated that if a zone change, a conditional use, or special use, properties that are located within 200 feet must be notified of the anticipated change. Property owners within the 200 feet, as of today, have not been notified. The day we saw the sign, we immediately contacted and questioned our alderman as to the placement of the sign. They too were not aware of the sign. They began asking the right people the proper questions. But by that time, which was the next day, the sign was removed, and the i's were dotted and the t's were crossed. Everything was already in place. Had it not been for the swift action of our alderman, the zone would have been changed without our knowledge or the community input. The day of the council meeting, the aldermen were informed of a presentation to be made to the city council by Ms. Snow, which is the Housing Authority Director, as to the projected plans of the Willa House and other buildings. That same day, the aldermen informed the Military Heights officers of the same presentation. We found the information to be limited in specifics. Military Heights officers began to do some research. They did the research to gather material to help the community to better understand zoning. We found that the zoning ordinance regulates the use of a structure, whether it be commercial or residential. We were told that the purpose of R-4 multifamily zoning district is to create zones that allow apartments. The North Little Rock Urban Renewal Plan were to maintain a small, quiet community consisting of C1 commercial and residential. In 1966, they amended C1 as a non-conforming use prior to the construction of the Willa House, which was built in 1969. And it was built specifically to provide a safe place for senior citizens. They know that, or they knew that the senior citizens in that area would occupy the buildings. They would be quiet, and we would have less pedestrian or vehicular traffic. This zoning has been allowed during this existence since 1966, so it's been in existence at least about 52, 53 years. Now, North Little Rock Housing Authority want to rezone to R-4, which means you're creating a zone that allows apartments. Under the city zoning ordinance, non-conforming structures may continue their use as long as no more than 75 percent of the value of the structure has been damaged by fire, explosion, weather, or other casualties. If the structure is damaged more than 75 percent, then the property must be used in conformance with its current zoning, District C1. Housing Authority owns the Willa House. Their projected plan is to remodel the Willa House. The remodeling can take place without the zoning change, provided that there are no physical construction changed. Their plan is to secure financial investors using Section 9. Who are the financial investors? How much control will they have? Ms. Snow stated that another company would be the administrator of the building. Again, not enough information. We questioned the fact that another company would be responsible for the day-to-day operations. Ms. Snow stated that if the Willa House is not rezoned, it will be dropped from the proposal. If HUD, she also stated that if HUD decides to sell, the community will not know what they might get in that particular building. So, the Military Heights, we say it can't be worse than what it is now. You have to have lived in a community that has a housing project in the area to know and to understand how it affects your community. You won't know looking from outside, looking in. The non-conforming use will drive investors away, and we understand that. The community say that HUD will find a way to remodel at one point in time. At least, we know what we have now. Ms. Snow stated that the residents will remain the same. We will have seniors and also those with disabilities. And the disabilities can be drug addicts, alcoholics, rehabs, et cetera. And these would be the disabilities under the age 55. The range of the guidelines for the classifying disability is wide. However, the resident selection will be with senior preference, which I really don't understand. But we feel that it would take 10 to 20 years for the building to occupy 100 percent with seniors. The community was told that the zone request made by the Housing Authority is just paperwork. It is not just paperwork. Zone change is a very serious act. It dictates the type of structure and how the structure will be used. If the zone is changed to R-4 and HUD decide to sell, investors can structurally change the facility to apartments and accommodate families with children. However, if it remains C1, it will remain as is. We have in the past spoke about the present residents in the Willa House and how the community have negatively been affected. We still have those concerns. Military Heights feel as though we are between a rock and a hard place. The agenda 0-18-87 states that reclassifying the property located at 2500 Willa Street from C1 to R-4 by amending ordinance number 7697. Make no mistake, the ordinance does not say reclassify. It says in bold print, zoning. So, the property is being rezoned. Reclassifying sounds as if this is not an important matter. This is an important matter. And I put in the, inserted in the little booklet, the ordinance number 7697, which states, "In ordinance to repeal the old zoning ordinance, ordinance number 3171, and all amendments thereto, adopting a new zoning ordinance declaring an emergency and for other purposes." Check the whereas, I also inserted that. The whereas, the first one, it states, "Ordinance number 3171, as amended, regulating the use of real property within North Little Rock has become outdated and difficult to enforce." We, the Military Heights community, disagree that the real property has become outdated. We don't think it has. It has not. It is being used as it was intended, keeping in concert with the area businesses and the neighborhood property owners. However, having said that, we ask that you think of the Military Heights community and its challenges to keep it small and family-oriented. We ask that you vote no to the reclassifying slash rezone of the property located at 2500 Willa Street.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. The, I failed to announce before we started public comment section that our rules require that we keep our comments to three minutes. Ms. Henderson was able to go over that because she's a great dancer, and she and I have shared a lot of dances together. But no more. So, from now on, the rest of the evening, of course, let's go by our laws, and that's three-minute comments. So, next, I've got Raymond Wells. Raymond, you wanna come speak?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Raymond Wells. I'm the resident commissioner for North Little Rock Housing Authority. Back here, you see, the seats back here are full of residents who actually live in the high rises, not only Willa House but also Heritage House. Ms. Henderson was eloquent in what she was saying, and being on the outside, not being able to see in, but we can tell you, living on the inside, looking out, that they are old and outdated. They need replaced, all of these places. These people have been waiting for this for some time. The whole zoning issue, not necessary because we're not doing, it hasn't been damaged 75 percent. But it was the city who requested that we do it, just in case something had happened, to be ahead of this curve. And with the neighborhoods, we want a quiet neighborhood also. That's what we strive for. We want good, we wanna be good neighbors, and we wanna have good neighbors. We don't enjoy loud, unruly people, drug addicts and alcoholics. We don't enjoy that, although they're part of all societies. We can't avoid that. The people here, come here tonight to show their support for the rezoning, so we can move this project forward. Some of the people that have been in here, one lady in here had been over 20 years in one of the high rises, has called this place home. She would love to have a new refrigerator or a new stove, new bathrooms, new cabinets, where some of your neighborhoods would like the same thing. And if you left these tall buildings as they are, they are gonna dilapidate. They are going to continually fall apart. The maintenance people have done a yeoman's work keeping them up and running, but there's some parts of these buildings that cannot be fixed with a Band-Aid any longer. They have to have major surgery, if you will. We wanna be good neighbors, both with Military Heights and the other neighborhoods that are around all of our sites. We're not doing this to be unruly or... We have a tendency to take pride in our place where we live at. There's been a lot of people that have moved in and out of these high rises before we got to them. We're trying to do the best we can with what we've got, and what we're looking for is a makeover, where we can take pride on the outside, that we can also take pride on the inside. That's what we're looking for. And I appeal to you to move this forward, get this behind us, so we can get the rest of the people that live inside these communities what they deserve and what they need.
Thank you, Raymond. Thank you also for your service on that commission. Okay, lastly, I have Lynn Deersaw, 01890. Lynn?
Mayor, if it's okay with you and the council, I'll wait for the legislation to come on.
It'll be fine. Okay, let's go into unfinished business.
R18210, Mayor Smith.
Hold it, please.
Okay. R18213, Mayor Smith.
Let me go back to that. We've got our contract down to two issues right now with waste management. We're trying to set up a meeting up this week to sit down with Mayor Stodla and Mayor Hillman out of Sherwood. So, hopefully, by the next council meeting, I'll have your contract. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. A resolution declaring certain city-owned items and other equipment as surplus, providing an auction thereof.
How about a motion?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R18214, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real property located at 616 Gardena Avenue in the city of North Little Rock.
Wait for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 616 Gardena Avenue? Seeing none, close the public hearing. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R18215, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real property located at 4108 Alma Street in the city of North Little Rock.
Wait for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 4108 Alma Street? Anyone here to speak on 4108 Alma Street? 4108 Alma Street, seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R18216, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real property located at 2111 Virginia Drive in the city of North Little Rock.
Move. Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak at 2111 Virginia Drive? 2111 Virginia Drive, seeing none, close the public hearing.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R18217, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Wait for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on certain real properties as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01885, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of license plate reader cameras from Sky Corp. Incorporated, sole source vendor, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings and we have an amendment.
Got a motion to suspend all readings, have it a second.
Second.
How about your amendment?
Uh...
Let me go ahead and call a vote on that, suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, state your amendment.
On the amendment, just by way of explanation, on the second whereas clause, we had a miscommunication with the police department, and so the cameras are actually mounted on poles as opposed to the police vehicle dashes, so I corrected that. Also, Mr. Barber informed us last week that the original legislation requested to purchase three, that they actually want to purchase four, for a total of $33,200 as opposed to $24,900. So I passed out the new legislation with those amendments in it.
You got that, Caitlin?
Yes, sir.
And that's my amendment.
Kate, do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion to amend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01886, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning certain unused easements on property located at 13050 Old River Drive in Scott, Arkansas, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings. Subpo.
A motion and a second, suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01887, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 250 Willow Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Move to suspend all readings.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, on the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01886, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting and abandoning certain unused easements on property located at 13050 Old River Drive in Scott, Arkansas, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings. Subpo.
A motion and a second, suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting Comcast of Arkansas Incorporated from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Move to suspend all readings.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, on the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 250 Willow Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Move to suspend all readings.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, on the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with a Plassey County tax collector against certain real properties in the city of North Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Wait for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on certain real properties as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of license plate reader cameras from Sky Corp. Incorporated, sole source vendor, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings and we have an amendment.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
How about your amendment?
Uh...
Let me go ahead and call a vote on that, suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance vacating and abandoning certain unused easements on property located at 13050 Old River Drive in Scott, Arkansas, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings. Subpo.
A motion and a second, suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01887, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 250 Willow Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Move to suspend all readings.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, on the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 250 Willow Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Move to suspend all readings.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, on the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of license plate reader cameras from Sky Corp. Incorporated, sole source vendor, first reading.
Ms. Spend the readings and we have an amendment.
Got a motion to suspend, have it a second.
Second.
How about your amendment?
Uh...
Let me go ahead and call a vote on that, suspend the readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting Comcast of Arkansas Incorporated from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
On the motion?
No, I want to say something.
One more.
And this is to the Military Heights group. We've always had your back on this, but at this time, you know, it's just one of these things, like I said, I wish we had a crystal ball, you could look into the future and everything. But at this time, to me, it seems that changing the zoning so that we can move forward, so that we can have some improvements, rather than sit and let that deteriorate, because I can't tell you how many phone calls I get because the elevator's broken at the Willow House, and I know how expensive that is, I see a lot of heads shaking, you know, there's a lot of things. And, you know, I know the neighbors that you want are the ones that are going to want the best place to live, just like you. And so this is the reason that I will vote yes.
And I probably need to say a little something, too. We met for, what, over two hours Thursday night, and I feel like we talked it out well and heard from you, we heard from what I call the experts that know the rules and the regulations. And this is a tough vote because I really, truly care about your community and I will continue to. But I'm also concerned that the vote tonight to rezone is something I'm going to have to vote for, but it's not a vote against Military Heights in any way.
On the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
01888, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting Comcast of Arkansas Incorporated from C1 to R4 by amending ordinance number 7697 of the city of North Rock, Arkansas, adopting amended land use plan for the subject property.
Comments?
Okay, this is a tough one. Thursday night, we had a meeting, Mrs. Snow from the Housing Authority and several others, and Sean Spencer, and if Sean is here, if he could come up and just give us a little explanation of how this began, what's going on, I mean, I see both sides, so it's, this is a really tough one.
Just a couple of comments from earlier. The zoning was done properly, all notice was done properly, 100%, no questions. The process has been followed exactly as it's supposed to be. And another clarification is, if you don't rezone this, I'm still going to issue a remodel permit for anything in the building because it's a continuation of a non-conforming use. So they're, they come in tomorrow and this doesn't get rezoned, I'm going to issue, they can remodel every one of those. The issue is that the feds or whoever may not give them the money because it's zoned wrong, but if they were wanting to remodel the whole building, I'll give them a permit tomorrow for it.
Oh, yeah, there's origins.
Yes.
Say that again.
It's a continuation of a non-conforming use, so they're allowed to continue that use forever. And if they need a remodel, I will issue a remodel permit for any remodeling need to be done in that building.
The feds, though...
I can't, I can't speak for them, so that's, I'm not sure where they are on the thing. I'm not, I'm not concerned about who's paying for it, it's who's, you know, can I issue a permit or not.
Ms. White?
Don't go away, Sean. Could Ms. Snow come up, please? Thanks, Sean. Thank you.
Have the chance to do that.
Okay, so here's a question too. So, you know, we rezoned it, then you can't get, then you still don't get the money, you know, where are we then? So, if the emergency clause does not pass, I mean, if we do not include an emergency clause, is that ninety days before it will go into effect? Or is it sixty?
It's sixty.
Sixty days. So would that affect anything? I mean, it's already been approved. It would take sixty days to go into effect because you're not going to be down the road till, for two months anyway, basically. Would that?
What happens tonight is, we leave here if, when your minutes come out, if we can show the indication that it has been passed. I mean, that's going to be strong enough to-
Even if it's not in effect until two months.
Well, yeah. I mean, they, they understand that the legislation has been passed.
I'm just trying to think of some protection. If something happens, though, that this doesn't go through, and I know two months is not a lot of time. You see where I'm going with this, Mayor? Just, you know, if this doesn't go through, because you've got like-
If what you're saying is if the deal falls through, we can take it back to a C1, is that what you're saying?
In two months, yeah. I mean, if it, if it falls through-
I mean, we could do that.
Right.
I mean, you, you could consider the takings, but we'd have to be sued, I guess, but if somebody said that we were taking that, that R4 away from them. But if the housing authority still owns it, it doesn't really matter.
But if they're not going to get their money, I wouldn't think that they would care anyway whether it was rezoned or not.
Right.
Basically, if you're not going to get the money. Is that correct?
Well, you know what? I don't know if it makes any difference with insurances and all that, because I didn't know this was the case until we started doing the due diligence-
Right.
For this project. So I don't know if it makes a difference when you start looking at insurances and all that. I mean, I don't know the answer. I don't know all the consequences that can happen because of the zoning.
But due to the timeframe, it has to be voted on tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We really want to close this year-
Okay.
And start construction.
Do you have to get that?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Robinson?
So the Willow House is owned by HUD, correct?
It's owned by the housing authority.
It's owned by the housing authority. But your funding is coming in order to do the renovations and all. Your biggest funders, who? Who's funding it?
Oh, that's-
Is that-
We will, we will have tax credits that we will sell to get some of the money. We will have, we will borrow some money. We will have some grants, a grant in from AFRA. We'll have just a myriad of funding sources.
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. White?
Okay, my, my next question's back to Sean. And thank you, Belinda, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Sean, can you one more time state what, what, what the vote tonight is for? If we change it from C1 to R4, will this be any kind of influence on who can live there?
It, it will not affect at all who can live there.
From the zoning aspect?
Zero, yes.
It's, it's nothing-
Rezoning will not control race, creed, religion, age, any of that. It's just, it's, it's, it's going to be, the use is not going to change from what it is now. It's an apartment building right now, and it'll, it'll just be zoned correctly. And, and zoning and classification is the same, same words. There's no difference between using those two words.
So R4 is multiple family?
Correct, yes. So we have three choices to rezone something to residential. R1, which is for one family. R2, which is also one family. Then R3, which is duplex, and then everything else is multifamily. So you, so this property either has one family on it, two families, or more than two families. And that's our, that's the three choi-, the general choices for a rezoning for residential.
Okay, I think this is where one of the, the confusion becomes, because you say family, but we say units. So-
It's, it'd be units.
Right.
Yes.
Units as opposed to family.
It'd be a housing unit.
Right, okay, so it's not-
A dwelling unit would be the proper term, yes.
Ms. Robinson?
So, changing this zoning from a C1 to R4 does not change the character of the neighborhood?
No, it's going to look exactly the same.
The neighborhood is still the same?
Yep.
Changing it to an R4, and it's just that piece of property, does not affect property values in that community?
I, I can't speak on property values. Not, I'm not an expert on that.
On the motion.
Excuse me. So, right now, there are a hundred separate domiciles in that building.
Think two hundred and fourteen.
I'm just throwing an arbitrary number out there. After we change it to an R4, there will be the same, roughly the same number of separate-
Exactly, the same.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I just had one more question. The family and the unit word. It's, it says, it's family in your, in the wording, right? In, in the housing wording, in your-
The, the title's multifamily.
Right.
Which, which is, we've got single family, duplex, and multifamily.
The word family, does, does, is there any, is there a definition for that?
Yes, and I couldn't read it off the top of my head right now. But-
What was your question?
What's the definition of family?
The definition of family for this legislation. What is, what's the defin-, I just-
There's, I think there's a zoning book in the drawer over here. I can read it to you.
Well, the housing authority, there, there is a law that basically says how many people can live in one unit.
Right, and that's what it would define?
Yeah.
For, for them to rent it out, yes.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed.
Ms. Ross?
The only thing that, that I see changing, other than improvements, if this does go through, is the management company. So if Mrs. Snow could kind of, did, did she leave on us? Okay.
I've given a couple of presentations to you all about this.
Right.
Because of the tax credits, and because we've not done tax credits, HUD will not, this is a whole different thing. It's in a, an association with the IRS to make certain that the investors are doing the right thing on their end and getting the right credit. So HUD requires you to have experience in order to run a tax credit property. We don't have that. And so we have to have someone who understands how that works and who makes certain that all those applications are processed correctly. And the investors, their, their investment is not at risk because of, you know, some form that wasn't processed correctly. So we bring a management company in to work with us for the first two or three years. So that's, you're going to find that with any housing authority in this state who has not had any experience with tax credits.
But the rules are still the same. It's preferred seniors, blah, blah, blah.
It is, it, the rules-
Nothing changes.
Nothing changes. So we want to make sure we don't mess up with the IRS, and so we-
You'll have people on site.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
One more thing. So, will the Willow House be the only one with senior preference? Are you going to have another?
Right now, it is, but it is our intent to also create a site, I mean, the selection standard for the rest of them to include, for the other towers to include senior preference.
For all the towers, then?
But right now, Willow House is the only one.
Okay, alright.
On the motion.
No, I want to say something.
One more.
And this is to the Military Heights group. We've al-, I, I, we've always had your back on this, but at this time, you know, it's just one of these things. Like I said, I wish we had a crystal ball. You could look into the future and everything. But at this time, to me, it seems that changing the zoning so that we can move forward, so that we can have some improvements, rather than sit and let that deteriorate, because I can't tell you how many phone calls I get because the elevator's broken at the Willow House, and I know how expensive that is. I see a lot of heads shaking. You know, there's a lot of things. And, you know, I know the neighbors that you want are the ones that are going to want the best place to live, just like you. And so this is the reason that I will vote yes.
And I probably need to say a little something, too. We met for, what, over two hours Thursday night? And I feel like we, we talked it out well and heard from you. We heard from the, what I call the experts that know the rules and the regulations. And this is a tough vote, because I really truly care about your community, and I, I will continue to. But I'm also concerned that, that the vote tonight to rezone is, is something I'm going to have to vote for. But it's not a vote against Military Heights in any way.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen eighty-eight, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
Ordinance granting Comcast of Arkansas Incorporated a non-exclusive franchise to occupy and use the streets within the city of North Rock, Arkansas, in order to construct, operate, maintain, upgrade, repair, and remove the cable system and provide cable services. First reading.
Move, move away of all readings.
About a second.
Second.
Motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Motion?
So moved, but-
Okay, give me a second. Alright, go ahead, Ms. Height.
Is this a, is this a renewal?
Yes.
Any, any, yeah, it's a renewal. Any changes in there, anything that-
No substantive changes. It just continues. Comcast has had a franchise with the city of North Little Rock. I can't remember for how many years. And doing some research for Councilmember Ross, earlier this week, we discovered that the franchises had in the past been done by ordinance. This, we have an actual agreement. The one positive change is that the franchise fee will be collected quarterly as opposed to annually, because now Comcast pays at the end of the year every year. So now we'll have the use of that money on a quarterly basis, instead of having to wait until the end of the year.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen eighty-nine, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving compensation and benefits for North Rock Police Department officers and supervisors. First reading.
Move suspend the readings.
Second.
A motion to suspend all readings. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Anybody got any questions? Ms., Ms. Scott?
Mayor, I'm sorry. I was out of town when this got filed last week. Both the, oh.
The posting.
Mm-hmm.
City attorney says that it's okay.
Okay, sorry. I was out of town.
I'm sorry, I'm-
Okay. We've worked on this for a long, long time, and, and I think it's right where we need it. PD's fine with it, so.
All parties agree.
On the motion.
Can we get a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
So move. I thought we did that.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen ninety, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving compensation and benefits for uniformed employees of the North Rock Fire Department. First reading.
Move suspend all readings.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Hold on, let me get Captain DeRisaw. He signed up to visit on this, Captain, with the fire department and the, the union, local union.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Lynn DeRisaw with the North Rock Firefighters Union. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, and the City Council last month for, for passing the proclamation to recognize our one-hundred-year anniversary of our union. And, uh, because we're going to display it proudly next to our original charter from nineteen eighteen. Uh, we come before you today, tonight, to oppose this legislation due to the fact that, uh, the, the legislation that's proposed tonight is actually in our contract. And, and as you know, we have a meeting in the morning at nine AM on our contract. And we feel confident that we've come up with some language for the contract that would avert this legislation. I think we will be able to, uh, come with you in the morning with some proposals I think that we're all going to be able to, to live with.
I hope you're right, Lynn.
Uh, we've got our, I mean, we're, we've got our hopes up. We're determined to, uh, we're determined to get an agreement.
Well, everybody understands what we're trying to do here. Because we don't have a contract, we don't have a vehicle that explains what our compensation is and the benefits are for our uniformed officers. So we had to go to this, because we've been in a stalemate on trying to, uh, to negotiate a contract for a couple of years now. And there's a couple of issues that none of us seem to want to budge on. And so that was the reason we had to do this, because the, the benefits that we're paying right now are basically not approved by you guys. Because we do not have a contract. So, um, what I would do, Captain, is that I would ask for the council to vote on this tonight. If we by chance reach an agreement and our negotiations tomorrow, then I would veto it.
Yeah, Ms. Robinson?
Rather do that, rather than holding it until after the meeting, since you are going to meet tomorrow?
That's my question. Why, why aren't we going on the third reading? Why don't you just go through the process? I don't know. I'm just asking.
Wouldn't it be better to reconvene on this after both sides meet?
I don't really care. Do we, do we care legally?
Ross said, hold it. Hold it.
The readings have already been suspended, but, um, we can, um, hold it if the City Council is in agreement until the next meeting, if you're the sponsor, if you don't object, and if the City Council concurs with doing that.
Y'all alright with that?
We'd like to hold it.
Hold it.
Alright, I'll hold it.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, what else? I think that's all of that. We go in public comment section?
Question.
Alright.
That doesn't apply to the policemen's, though, is that correct?
Correct.
There's pass.
Only for the firemen.
Right.
Is that right?
Right. Okay, let's go to public comment. I remind everybody, and I do have my little stopwatch up here, that we've got three minutes. And, um-
Our does.
So with that, Mr. Arndt. Your name just was on top of the list.
First, I would congratulate everyone that won their election. I would also like to praise someone that lost. And I'm not going to try to pronounce his last name. Chase was his first name. He was running against, uh, Mr. Ween. He was very polite. He didn't sling any mud. As the person that opposed him first, he kept everything up above board. Sometimes that doesn't help with politicians. But if he's listening, I want him to know, Mr. Ween and a lot of the people that worked on his, uh, party want to say thank you, not like a Victoria Lee did. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. JT Zakreski.
Hello, J.D. Zakreski. I was the first runner-up in the Ward Four election last week. I just wanted to also say congratulations to Councilwoman Robinson and to Councilwoman-elect Jane Ginn. Uh, I want to wish good luck and good guidance and good judgment to all the members of the council, to the mayor, and to the leaders of North Little Rock over the next few years. And we'll be watching closely. And I just ask that when you make your decisions, don't always just think about what's going on today. Think about how your decisions are going to affect us five years, ten years, and twenty years down the road. Thanks.
JT, I would like to ask you to consider being on some of our commissions. Would you be interested in that?
I would be.
I love your education, love your youth. Thank you. Brett Ake? Brett, from, um, Bellflower Drive?
Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, do you remember me, Mr. Mayor? We met at the Ward Four Mayor's meeting a little while back.
Yeah.
I brought to your attention I was having a problem with Mr. Wilburn and getting permits and stuff like that.
Correct.
You gave me off to Mr. Scott and assured me, when I left me, that I wouldn't have any more problems. Anything I needed, I'd be provided with. I was handed, Mr. Scott handed me off to six different people, all of which sent me back to Mr. Wilburn. Problem that we're having in Faulkner Crossing is we are, well, we're plagued with sinkholes. And the sinkholes are deriving from non-oversight of installation of sewer drains. Anywhere there's a sewer drain in my, in our, in our particular neighborhood, and there's a nice little big hole right in front underneath the concrete, or in the grass, or somewhere around there. And it all stems from Mr. Wilburn not overseeing any of the work that Roush Coleman is doing at any point. I have to ask you, who's in charge of the city engineer's office? Who's in charge of enforcement of those rules?
Yeah, it's public comment.
Okay, understood. Um, I guess what I'm asking you for today is for you guys to pull all the permits for Roush Coleman until they can come up to compliance. I sent an email to every single one of you with two ADQ reports in it, one from last year and one from this year. If you read the report from this year, you'll notice in the notes section that they were out there investigating a separate incident when they noticed the one that they reported. So there's more ADQ reports coming from Roush Coleman. They have at least three open construction sites in the city of North Little Rock. And it seems like when you go out to these sites, it looks like the city of North Little Rock has just adopted the area around these Roush Coleman sites, which is fine, but it leaves all of that construction work under the observation of Mr. Wilburn, who has shown me in a meeting between myself, him, another city engineer, and two Roush Coleman employees that he is absolutely unwilling or unable to make them do anything. I asked for all of the permits in September, for all of the permits and all of the inspections that have been done for phase, phase eight, phase nine, and phase ten. And this is what I got. One. They're supposed to be doing these every week during construction. One, folks, one. That's what the city engineer's office has on file for inspections. One. Every single week. Twelve years they've been at this. They provided me with one. So I guess my question is, who's overseeing that department? And what else do I need to do to make this an action item for this committee?
We, we have your written complaint. I read it today. As a matter of fact, I, I didn't have a chance to look at ADQ's reports or ask any questions. Chief of Staff and I have met this afternoon, and we're going to take your complaint and investigate it. Hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll be able to try to figure out what's going on, so.
I was really sad to see the guys from the engineering office slink out of here right as the meeting started, though. That was kind of upsetting. And Mr. Maurice Taylor was the only person that called me back about my email, wanted to know the whole story. I gave it to him. He came right out and asked me why I didn't come to him first with all of this, and I'll tell you all the same thing I told him. He used to work for Roush Coleman, and I don't believe he's the man that should be overseeing them. Thank you, folks. We appreciate your time.
You, Brett. Brett, how do you pronounce your name, your last name? Akle?
Ake.
Ake.
Thank you.
Deidra Taylor? Are you standing down, Deidra? I don't see Deidra. Okay, let's go on to the next one. Randall Bradley and Dorothy Backus?
I'd like to say good evening to the council. Uh, I'm the speaker for the seniors that live over here on Second in Washington. And we've been having problems over here, uh, probably the last six months or so. We have a motorcycle club that moved in. And they're there from nine in the morning to probably five in the evening, and then they're back at nine-thirty at night to five in the morning. And they're racing up and down the street. You got open container drinking on Laurel that's not being addressed with trash. And we also have eighteen-wheelers coming down through Second Street, pulling people power lines off their houses. And these are most, uh, people in that area is the age from sixty to eighty. They can't afford nine-hundred and something dollars every time a truck comes through there and pull their whole power line off their house. And we've been having this problem now, going on six months or better. And, well, it got straightened out by, uh, Chief Bradley, back when he was the chief, had no problems up until now, since he been, I ain't been here since seven years ago. And it's been quiet until this motorcycle club got in here. They started running eighteen-wheelers down Second Street, picking up people in the middle of the night at three o'clock in the morning. And I do have that on my camera, uh, that's recording these eighteen-wheelers picking up these people that's on Second.
What hundred block on Second?
Uh, it runs from twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four hundred block. And these are, these people that are in this area now are in their eighties. They bought their houses back in seventy-three. They're retired and need some help.
Yeah. You got that, Chief?
Yes, sir. But we've been, we've been on that four-part, thirty years. Brad?
Yeah, just meet the chief out there. We'll make sure we get somebody on top of that. Okay, now we got Mike Schrakel. Schrakel?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members.
I'm Mike Schnake with, uh, Quality Land Services, uh, a contractor that is employed by Faulkner Crossing POA in regards to, at the direction of Mr. Wilburn, to clean up, um, public runoff, ditches, and easements within the subdivision. And I've brought, you know, and I'm going to kind of caveat on Mr. Aki's statements he made earlier regarding, um, the due diligence of Mr. Wilburn and the city, um, engineers, and basically all departments of the building department. Because I have met with each and every one of them formally in regards to silt runoff, um, the, the lack of oversight within the, the community. And when I say that, you have easements that are out there, of which there's three hundred and twenty-seven taxpaying residents that are, you know, basically being disenfranchised at this, at this point, and in an unsafe environment. And when I say that, you guys have passed legislation, legislation, I believe it was in ninety-eight, regarding, uh, site when you are excavating or removing earth and creating a void in the earth. And when it, when it reaches a certain height, what the requirements are in safe, um, access within that site. And, and within the site that Roush Coleman is currently working within, there's several instances of ditches of greater than five foot in depth, which every time it rains or I'm out there working, you know, there are children that live within this neighborhood that are out there riding bicycles. You know, I have directly from Mr. Chris Wilburn been told, you do not trespass on that site. Or, you know, and they have called the cops on multiple occasions to come out. And as far as I know, there is no public easement or no public access or right-of-way that is considered a trespassing action. And when I am working within, in an environment that is affecting my ability to continue forward within that neighborhood to not only appease the city of North Little Rock, but ADQ and the Corps of Engineers, because of all the runoff there runs into the estuary. And that is being governed by the Corps of Engineers. And Mr. Wilburn has stated on multiple occasions to myself directly to, to not be involved on this. And if I choose to keep speaking up, I better make sure that my business is doing its job and doing its job correctly. You know, and at the beginning of this meeting, we all stood up, and we pledged allegiance to that flag, which I take very serious as a retired veteran. And within that pledge, it states, "With liberty and justice for all." You know, and that's all that's being requested, is if, if I'm doing business within your community, please provide oversight to myself. If someone else within your community is doing jobs or work within your community, and you have ditches in your backyards greater than eight foot deep, I think you'd be very concerned when no one addresses that issue. And when you have an open site, an open site, that is able to be walked upon by anyone within that community, it is your job as the city to provide not only code enforcement, but follow your guidelines and regulations and enforce your guidelines and regulations and not be in bed with someone just because they're a large entity within your community doing business. And alls I ask for is that the, the city of North Little Rock enforce your codes and regulations in regards to building and land improvements. And, you know, I appreciate your, your-
Thank you very much.
-here tonight, so, thank you.
I've, I've got your phone number here. Caitlin, if you will email that to Chief Bradley so we can add it to the, uh, as a co-complaint with Richard?
Sure.
Okay.
And I do have photos, aerial photos and everything to not- And I do have photos, aerial photos, and everything to not, you know, there's facts and there's an opinion. There's nothing but facts all over out there, and it shouldn't take ten people to call and say, "Hey, there's an issue." It should only take one, and there'd be a response.
I assure you, we'll look into it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council members, Ms. Robinson?
I have a problem with campaign signs, and, um, maybe, I, I plan to get with the city attorney so we can, uh, come up with something regarding campaign signs. You know, the election is over, and I know I've publicly announced and asked people if, um, any of my signs are still out there, to please call me so I can come get it, 'cause I understand sometime you have people putting out signs, and you have people just jumping out of cars, putting signs on easements and everything, but, uh, at a polling site yesterday, Sherman Park, there were still campaign signs out, and, and I think that's unfair to the community, and I think that once an election is over, people should pick up their signs. And so I have some other concerns regarding campaign signs, and don't wanna infringe upon anyone's First Amendment right, but I think that we should discuss campaign signs.
Okay, good luck, we've been trying to address that for twenty-five years.
I understand, we're gonna do something.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, this is just some trivia, okay? You ready?
Ready.
The original Comcast contract, it was forty-eight years ago in nineteen seventy. So we've never really, uh, just to guess, how much do you think cable television was back then? This is for one, for one outlet, and it was a dollar each for, uh, each additional outlet?
Uh, six ninety-five.
Five fifty, five fifty a month, uh, for your initial service and a dollar for each outlet. Wow, I miss those days.
Yeah, those days back, I just got mine today, and it's a hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I think.
Right, right. We didn't have quite as many channels.
Yeah, anybody else?
Not quite as many channels.